Whatever age that kid was, I don't know if they're the same age, but he's at the same stage.
So, good evening, everybody. We are going to start the work session. We have three advisory committee reports tonight, and we are going to be starting with the Title I Parent Advisory Committee Annual Report. And thank you all for being here. We very much appreciate you bringing us your reports tonight. I did want to mention that we are down a few board members. We have a couple of board members who are on out-of-town travel. We did have a recent resignation, and we also had a board member who is running late for work, and we have one who was unfortunately in an accident, so I don't know if we'll be seeing her. So, I do want to assure you that board members have read these reports very thoroughly and very much appreciate all the hard work that goes into them. And so, we will start with Title I, and we have with us Mara Burke, Director of Early Childhood and Grant Management. I beg your pardon. I'm so sorry. Yeah, I'm on the wrong thing. I'm sorry. Yes, we have Early Head Start, Family and Early Childhood Education Program, Head Start Policy Committee Annual Report. So, Ms. Burke, if you would like to, could you introduce who you have with you here today?
So, we have two of our executive board members, two of our fathers of the program, Farshid Hakular and Hassan Akalardi, if I get it right, I know. And Farshid is going to give us the report this evening. He's our chair of our executive board. Welcome.
Good evening, Dr. Lockhart and members of the school board. My name is Farshid Hakimya, and I would like to thank you all for the opportunity this evening to present to you the annual FSAP Head Start and Early Head Start Report on behalf of the Parent Policy Committee. This year, chart for the school board was to strengthen the capacity of teachers and families to build executive function skills in children. Let me tell you how my family experienced FSAP and Head Start that led me to this evening. It was, it was on March 28th this year, I and my wife with two kids, my daughter, Anisha, seven, and my five-years-old, to-be-five-years-old Ariana. We picked them up from school, and we were driving to a restaurant to celebrate my wife's birthday, and that my daughter, on the backseat, she asked me a question. She, she calls me Baba, which means father. She said, "Baba, do you know what is community?" I was driving. It was kind of a rush hour. I didn't understand her question. I said, "Well, can you repeat again your question?" She said, "Do you know what is community?" So, the second time I understood what she was asking. And honestly, I was surprised that how, it's a loaded question for a five-years-old. So, for my own curiosity, before answering her question, I asked her, "What is community?" And then she started talking that community is our house, our friends, our families, the Toys R' Us, the store she loves a lot to go and make me to spend money, and the pizza place, and the Target, the police station, and the post office. And she was like, keep naming it and adding to her definition of the community. I was, I was driving, but there was an explosion of emotions in my brain. Because of both me and my wife, we did our higher education and masters and doctorate in community empowerment. So, for us, it was a moment of surprise, but we were extremely happy. And, and for me, I was really curious. So, so the next, we keep talking about several pieces of community, and how you could be a good person in a community, what you would do with a community. So, she was keep contributing to the conversation. But it was a huge moment for me that my daughter, who is going to be five in the next two months, was talking about the community and how she could play a role in that. And the next day, I went to school on a parent policy center meeting that we had every month. This is actually the place where my journey is started with FSAP and Head Start program. When my daughter was enrolled, I was asked to participate in one of the meetings. And on that first meeting, there was a group of us, and then a specialist, Neel, who's also here. We were talking about the book by Alan Galinsky, The Mind in the Making. So, there was like, an interesting, but very, of course, I would say, strong book to read and focus and reread, because it's so much about the child psychology and science that needs all of us to be part of that. But that monthly parent meeting, I was, I was encouraged to participate in the, in the, in the meeting that's coming on, on September, and then I should be part of, more engaged with the, with the community. And so, so I participated in the first community, in a meeting, Parent Policy Committee, where there was a kickoff program. I listened to members of the Parent Policy Committee from the last year, their experiences, and everybody was, there was announced that everybody can run for an executive board to be more engaged with the, with the community. So, actually, I did study my bachelor's in political science, but I'd never been part of any, any election, or I never there to step in into, you know, running for, for a position. But anyway, I had a couple of minutes to prepare in speech, and I, and I went there and, you know, signed in my name that I would want to run for the chairman of the executive board. Of course, there was like, I think, six to seven people running, and I was, in so many ways, a minority. First of all, I was, I was a father, and there were so many mothers, and I felt, felt disempowered. But, but I, but I, but I started my, my, I think I had five minutes of talk. I started talking exactly how I felt about my daughter, how, how I'm concerned about her and her future, and the place she's engaging, because it was the time she was going from my home to a place, from morning to evening, so I wanted to know more about what she was doing. So, I told the crowd that, "Well, we are parents, but I love my daughter, and I would do anything for her." So, if you vote for me, I would care for your kids as my own kids, and I would really try my best to do anything I can in this, in this capacity. I was elected. That was, that was a surprise, but also a joy, because first time running for office and people vote for you, you don't know them. And, and then, and then again, it just gave me so much more about how people care about their kids. And then, any relationship could be established, any political relationship could be established based on the shared concern and shared values of their parents and in their community. So, going on from that point, I have taken, I've tried my best to, to drive every meeting from DC on a, on a rush hour all the way to Fairfax, and make sure that, you know, I, I should be part of the meetings. And we have, we have did everything we could to strengthen the program, to be engaged parents, and also to advocate for other parents in our community, how their engagement and their contribution could benefit the, the school system on, on a parent's side. So, this is my story, how, how I engage with the, with the board. And I would like to end this story with, with a quote from the Chicago mayor, where I was, I was supported by the school board to go there and participate on a Head Start National Conference. Mr. Rahm Emanuel, Chicago mayor, said that, that a Head Start is not babysitting. It's actually a foundation for, for growing the new generation and engaged citizens. I don't know to what extent he really understands what that sentence meant to him, but I think it meant a lot to me, especially when I heard my daughter talking about community at a, at the age of five, while I was, I understood community and definition of community when I was at college, basically speaking. So, for me, I really understood that the, that the school she is going is not a babysitting. It is a lot more than that. So, she has transformed from being a kid who was always enjoying fun, not listening to dad, not communicating, not sharing, being stubborn in so many ways, to a kid who was like, focused, communicating, sharing, well, not 100 percent. But still, she has transformed a lot. And I understand that all this transformation is happening because of the Head Start program, and how hardworking the team has, has been. And because I've been father who, every month, listening to the reports from the director morrow and the team on, on the progress of kids, on their food, on the budget, on everything else. And we, we tried our best, first, to learn what's happening, and then, second, to ask more questions, to, to communicate, to, to specifically ask for trainings, especially on budget, when we were talking about budget. There was a budget brought to us, and we talked that the better way to understand, and you know, not to rubber stamp it, but to actually know what is happening, and then we could actually sign it, is to set up a training program. And the, and the team put a couple of hours program for the entire committee, and we, we went there. There was so much. We went through details and, and kind of understand as much as we could, and then follow up to support that. So, so in order to, to continue the, our contribution on my own personal capacity, I would definitely, my journey does not finish here. It would be continued. And sometime, I'm kidding with, with some of my friends that either I need to have, bring another kid or adopt a kid, because I want to still be part of the FSAP family. But, but moreover, my two kids are going to school in Fairfax County, and I think I would be, I would do everything I can in any capacity to be part of this, because I love my kids a lot, and I know all the parents do. So, if this loves makes me to be worried about them, about everything they are engaged with, their school, their food, their security, their transportation system, and I would continue my, my own contributions as much as I can to take care of them, not only in my family, but outside my family, at a school, an entire level. There is two suggestions, that recommendation, that I would like to present on behalf of the, the school board. Number one is to dedicate funding to install and upgrade age-appropriate playgrounds to all schools who, which serve FSBC pre-K students, which is, I think, the director might go on, on the details of this, but it's actually, a lot of playgrounds are not upgraded, and kids with a younger age, when they play, they definitely injure their cells, or, or it's, it's not age-appropriate. I, I actually told Dr. Director that, you know, my, my daughter injured her soul. I said, "Well, Glen Forest Elementary has a pre, has that pre-K kindergarten." And then, the, the second suggestion is to dedicate funding for weekly planning time substitute. Thank you so much for listening to my story and being here, supporting our school system.
Thank you very much. Would you like to add to that, or make?
I'd add two, two points. One of, about the first recommendation. As you can see, my, my biggest problem in life, which I bother me every, every morning, every hour, is my obesity. And the biggest thing, me and my wife thinking about to, to, to save our children is to how to save them and to keep them away from obesity, because we, I know how much this affected me every day, every hour. So, when I learned that there is a third of the schools have no appropriate playgrounds for the Head Start age, I get nervous. My kid has good playground, appropriate for himself, but I get nervous for others, especially when I read that, according to statistics, that the low-income families have more percentage of obesity among their children than the high, and higher income. So, this recommendation is, I think it's, it's part of me, a part of my message, that, please, this, we should take care of. I will tell you something. This is my third year in the US. I get to the US as a refugee. I'm Syrian refugee. I was in Phoenix, and I relocated here to the Fairfax one and a half year ago. And when I knew that there is Head Start program, which is pre-K, I was thinking with my wife that doesn't deserve it to, to send our child, he's just four years old. Why, why send him to school? Maybe if he sit with us, it will be better for him to learn from us. But we noticed that our son, Anas, has no enough activity of movement. And this is the big fear from, from my side and from my wife. So, we decided to send him to the Head Start just because we are sure that he will get more activity there, and he will play there, and he will have some games, so he will, maybe we will prevent him from getting obese. So, we decided to send him. And after we sent him, we, we, we discovered that we get a lot, a lot, a lot behind, get him some activities in the school. He is now our reference in the pronunciation, the good, the, the right pronunciation in English. And we have problem in B, if you know. So, we say apple, for example. So, whenever we say apple, he will say, "It's apple, not apple." And whenever we, we read something, me or his, or my wife also, so we ask him, "How, how do you say, for example, policy?" So, he will say it, so we'll see, we'll say it as he's saying it. So, he's now our reference in how to, to say the right English. And now, I am serving in different committees. I'm serving in FSAP, Early Head Start, and Head Start. I'm serving in Policy Council Committee. I'm serving in MSA OC Committee for Minority. I'm serving in CAB. I'm serving in SKPT. I have, my job is from, I'm doing my job in home, so this gives me some flexibility to, to do some, some activities, additional activities. So, I'm serving in all these committees, in addition to, to subcommittees also, additional subcommittees. So, I will let, I'll, I'm sure I can tell you that my friends, my peer friends, who lived in the US more than 10 years here, I'm now, I'm now engaged in this community more than them, in one year only, because of this program. And understanding this program is engaging and helping families, not only the kid, is what make me respect this program, and really, I, I want to serve this program more and more. This is my first point. So, please, take care of that playground. Now, my second point should be the first point, but because Farshid spoke first, so I can say it now and close it. I, I would have to say first that I'm really thank you for your time and work toward our community and our kids. Thank you very much. And I want to extend my thanks to the great staff and teachers you have. They should be the greatest human staff in the nation. I really mean that. I, I volunteered for one full year, for one full day with, in my, with my, with my kid in the school. And I witnessed how high the quality they are receiving from the teacher. And also, I get some techniques, how to deal with my kid. For example, I don't know how to deal with my kids in home when, when they put their fingers in, in mouth. So, when, when I saw them in the school, so the teacher was sitting like this and say, and saw one guy, one, one kid putting his finger here, and she said only one magical phrase. "Hands in lap, finish. Finish. Nothing happened after that." And every day in home, I, I make words with my wife, with my kids. "Take your hands off your mouth. Take your hands off your mouth." So, now, hands in lap, my kid looked at me, "Oh, why you go to school that day?" They used to, in my home, they used to tell that physicians are the most human career in the world. I used to tell that this is not true at all. I used to think that teachers and the staff supporting teaching are the most human career in the world. Why? Because, because physician should keep away from his sensitivity with his client, with his patient, to, to do the, the work. And he get, at the end of the day, a lot of money for that. But teachers and the staff supporting the teaching process, they continue, keep their sensitivity very great with their kids and with the families of the kid. From the first day I came to the campus school, up till today, in the reception, I'm facing the same smiling from the staff there, the same caring. They asking about me, about my family, about my kids, how they getting, getting advanced, and, and how I'm, I'm getting well. And at the end of the day, they get a little of money, and keep on. Believe me, this receptionist, oh, she is the staff there. We, we met her in the school, and accidentally, we met her working as retailer in Macy's at the same night. And she received that, received us with the same smile, with the same caring. And really, I want, wanted to cry. She get nothing from this job, and she keep teaching and caring about kids and their families, and get another, another job as retailer, at, at the night to, to, to just maybe secure their hair needs. So, I think this is the greatest career in the world, teaching and the, the supporting teaching. So, what I want to say is, please, take care of this care staff. Take care of them, please. Love them and serve them as they are doing to us and our kids every single day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We very much appreciate those testimonials and what these programs have meant to you and your families. That's, it, it's excellent to hear, and it certainly puts into, to clear terms exactly, you know, why we have these programs and what it means to families. I'm going to go to questions from board members, and I'm going to start with Ms. Corvett Sanders.
Gentlemen, thank you. Your testimonials were beautiful and heartwarming. I had a couple of questions that you answered, one being how many playgrounds, how many schools don't have playgrounds that support our youngest children? And so, now I know that a third of them, so 20? Okay, that's great. The second is whether or not, and maybe Ms. Burke is best positioned to answer this question, why do we think the number of students are going down that are requesting services?
I, I think there could be lots of possibilities, but one possibility is we have increased the number of children we've served over the past five years by over 200 children. So, I think that could be having an impact. The county has also increased the number of children they are, are served. But I, I'm sure there's multiple variables that feed into the lessening, lesser number of children that's, are on our waitlist.
So, that's just the waitlist, so we have decreased the waitlist. Okay. Excellent. Do we have a geographic distribution of where the waitlist is? What areas of the county?
Yes, we do. That was part of the response to our strategic plan, Strategy Three. That was one of the questions, I believe, you even asked, so that was in the follow-up report. I do, I did bring that with me, if you would like to see that.
I'd appreciate seeing it, so that'd be great. And then, finally, gentlemen, you are wonderful emissaries, examples of engaged parents, and focusing on how we can engage people. That's one, that was, your charge this year was not only how to ensure that we had professional development and supports for all of our teachers, which I note that you do have a recommendation of having more planning time for them. I noticed that you didn't have a recommendation on how to extend or increase engagement by parents and families. Do you have any suggestions on that, especially, and this is not to me be sexist, but I love the fact that there are two fathers up here. And so, your insights on how we can engage families more effectively and get next year 50 fathers like you up there.
Thank you. Mrs. Strauss?
Oh, I beg your pardon. I, oh, I, I thought you were making a comment, but by all means, go ahead and, and answer your question about fathers.
I'll just make a quick comments. I recall every month, we, on our meeting, we have been talking how, how we have more engaged parents. And I've been sending monthly letters, and we have a Facebook page. So, but, but again, a lot of families maybe with, well, work comes first, and, and a lot of them working, and moreover, on my own experience, what I, what I want to say on, in this specific capacity, but it, it cannot, I have talked to a lot of parents who are planning to enroll their kids to school. And I remember I've, I've, I've distributed the phone number of the school, encouraged them how their kids should go there. And I remember the staff is, you know, every day sending email through on my own, on my own network, kind of being an advocate of the program and, and encouraging more families, talking to them in person, on our family events, or any, any, any other evening party, talking about the kids and how this program could work. So, so what I would like to kind of summarize what I said is, like, there is some official channels of social media, and, and the newsletters, and, and the publicity, and the website. But moreover, I think it would be a lot more important that each parent in their own circle, in their own group of people, that they are, and their stories could encourage other parents to be more part of the FSAP program. And, and share, sharing is the key thing. So, I think a lot of time, when I've been with my friends, and, and everyone is trying to tell their own story, and, you know, I've kind of been, kind of bullying them, like, telling them that, "Hey, I have something very important to share. It's not about my kids, but it's, it's the experience I get from my kids." And if you do this, I think you would enjoy the same level of, and then, you would not believe that the whole evening would turn the, the story of education and their kids, their engagement with their, with their parents. So, I think through our committee, we have keep encouraging each parent to tell their story, tell the truth. Do you see any difference? Be courageous on sharing what has been changed about your own kids. And then, this could actually expand on other level.
I, I can say two, two points. The first point is, should be come from your side, is to celebrate the good models to the community, using your media, using your channels with the community to celebrate. Using your media, using your channels with the community to celebrate the good models of fathers who engaged and speak about them and show them to the community. The second thing that, as Farshid said, the first interest for the father is to work and to have enough income as much as possible. So, this is their first priority, but we can, we can have them in some events. If we call for some events during the year, twice, four maybe events, to call fathers and families to share, to come and have some donuts. And have us also, have us also and speak to them. Yes, donuts will make obesity, I think, right? So, if we can educate them. So, education to the community is very, very useful, I think so. One example is, I was in the conference, Head Start Conference, a few weeks ago. And one session was called More Than Donuts For Fathers. And the lecturer was very, very good. And he gave a lot, lot of information about how the kids will get better if the father get really engaged, not just informed. So, get engaged in reading even stories at night, get engaged in go to the school, get engaged with school, not to go to the meeting at school, just to listen, but to do something in the school. And he gave some statistics, very nice, very good. And I told the policy council about him and they are communicating with him now, maybe to have him in Fairfax County. And they asked me to recruit fathers to come and listen to him. I think education is very important. If we cannot bring them every month to committees, we can bring them twice a year to some events and educate them and celebrate your models. So, other minorities, when my minority see me, for example, you are celebrating me because I'm engaged. So, they will think about it. Maybe there's something good there. And they keep, they just keep themselves away from it. Thank you.
I'm hoping someone videotaped your stories and made them available on the Facebook page or website. I bet you can get on their calendar.
Mrs. Strauss?
Great. Thank you very much for sharing your stories and it is good to see fathers. I think it's wonderful. And for your reaching out to the community to try to bring in more families so we can educate more young children. So, thank you all very, very much for raising your hand and being part of it. Okay, I have a couple of questions. Ms. Burke, how many are we, how are we doing with Healthy Families Kids coming into Head Start? In other words, because at one point, we were saving some slots for those four-year-old children, I think. I don't know. And that was, maybe we're not sure. Healthy Families Fairfax? Yes, yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, we continue to partner with our, the team in Fairfax County. So, Healthy Families sees kids to a certain age and then they transition. So, we do work with them to have them apply either in the community programs or in FCPS. So, that is an ongoing relationship that we do have.
All right. So, that's going along just fine. Okay, great. I also see in the minutes of one of your last meetings, the enrollment for the fall. Where are we with children now? Where are we with children you expect to enroll in the fall? What is the size of the waitlist? What are the numbers as best as you know?
Yeah. So, the last time, we sort of transitioned off the waitlist at a certain point. But last month was where we transitioned and we had about 200 children that sat on the waitlist because we do stop enrolling towards the end of the year purely because of the effect that, you know, a few weeks would have. In terms of our, so we're already geared up for next year. And we have, I believe, we are 1,200 children enrolled now, which we, which is far surpassed any of our enrollment in the past. So, really, our recruitment team deserves a lot of credit for ensuring that families know early that their child will have a place in school. And we will continue to work with families to get the last 500 children, a little over, almost 600 children enrolled.
So, what do you project the way, it sounds to me so that we've dramatically decreased the waitlist? Because I know that's been-
For four-year-olds, we've dramatically decreased it. We've seen an increase in infants and toddler, infant and toddler waitlist because there's less access for those children. So, yes, we have seen a decrease because as I shared earlier, we have increased the number of slots available to four-year-olds.
School board, board of supervisors, both.
Yes, you guys have both. Thank you.
Very hard to open more classrooms.
But we still consistently see, we still do have a waitlist.
Right, right. Okay. And then I had also noticed in your report, you talked about a rebranding. Can you tell me a little bit more about what that means and what that is?
We have found that families, as you've heard, these fathers refer to us as Head Start. And that is just a small piece of our grant, right? We have multiple grants. So, we're looking at, you might see at the top, we're talking about FCPS pre-K and then have FCS Up Head Start, Early Head Start. Because one of the pieces we have found, when our state people come and their money is VPI and we have Head Start, it referred to it as Head Start. Yeah. So, they're like, well, you're not really Head Start. So, we're trying to get a larger umbrella name, which would be FCPS pre-K, and then have the other grants listed.
Right. Because I know in your financial page where you break out.
Yeah.
Because I know you guys always talk about this as a brading of whatever resources we can pool together from all the sources to be able to meet the needs to as many of our little children as we can. So, all right. So, again, tell me again, the name is going to be?
So, we're trying out FCPS pre-K.
Okay. All right. And then acknowledging that it's funded by-
ESAP, which is the local dollars.
VPI, Head Start, sort of all of those pieces. Okay, great. Well, thank you very much.
Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentations. You talked about, you know, woman power in Fairfax. As you can see, even on the school board, it's a woman who control, who dominate the power here. Thank you. I have a few technical questions. So, maybe these technical questions go to Ms. Burke. That out of about $25 million of budget that go into educating these youngsters, a roughly, what's the amount that comes out of FCPS's operating budget? Yeah, I saw the report. I saw the report, but I think at least one place, it was a combination of several different funding. So, couldn't tell what the breakout, whether it's a 20% or-
The school board, the board of supervisors provides additional- provides additional dollars. If you want the exact amount, I'll have to get that from my finance person or I'll have to do the addition here. Okay.
All right. You know, I couldn't add up those numbers because some of them are lumped together.
Yeah, some of them were lumped to the board of supervisors with the school board money.
Correct. For some of these programs, grant funding or state funding, is a waitlist required component?
So, the, so when we berate our funds, so if we step back and we think about berating our funds, we always have to follow the highest level of standards, which is the Head Start standards. And Head Start does require a waitlist.
So, how much of waitlist do they require, whether it's a 10%, 5% or do they have a certain number or any waitlist will do?
So, they don't provide exact guidance like that. What they do is they tell you that you have to, if a child leaves, you have to replace that child within 30 days. So, we need to have enough children and eat, for us, because we're at multiple locations, we have to have a multiple children at every school in case a child leave so that a child can quickly join the classroom within 30 days. So, that's how we look at it. We look at, try to at the minimum have two to three children ready to go into a classroom.
Okay. I think a number of youngsters I saw on the waitlist, 200 plus 19, that 219 altogether being on the waitlist, is that they're on the waitlist mostly because of limited nature of funding and facilities to accommodate them? Or is it more of funding, less on facilities?
I think we always have to look at the combination that we, that if we have funding, will we have a place for them either in the school or the community? So, facilities plays a role in it. And if we have facilities, do we have the funding to support the classroom? So, I really think it's a combination of-
So, if you had more funding, let's see, last year, these are last year's numbers, obviously. Had we had more funding last year, would you have been able to accommodate more?
That's a discussion we have in collaboration with facilities. So, there are rooms in different parts of the district. So, we would work with facilities as we do whenever we get funding to find a location for a classroom to go.
Okay. The one last question has to do with a per-child spending. There seems to be about $14,000, looking at the chart, $14,682. That's the last year, 2017. And few years ago, it was $13,440 and then yearly per $13,675. So, heads gone up. When, for our school system as a whole, last year, not FY18, FY17, it was about $13,700 for FCPS. That whether there is a way to accommodate more children by somehow finding a way to reduce the per-child spending? Because since we have 219, we had 219 children on the waiting list. Whether, whether that would have been any way possible or?
So, we consistently look for ways to reduce our spending. So, a good example is that several years ago, we went to an outside vendor to provide food because that saved us about $200,000 a year. So, we do try to be creative in how we, it is on, I'm sorry, how we look for savings. I think the difference between the cost per pupil for your average K to 12 child is that, again, when we think back to the standards and the requirements of the grant, the grant requires comprehensive services. So, we do have nutritionists and health specialists and family specialists that contribute to this bottom line of costs per child that isn't necessarily calculated in your K to 12 student. So, I think that's an important piece to know to begin with. But we are consistently looking for ways to save money. Again, like the food program, looking at how to save dollars.
I have a one, just a quick follow-up on that one. So, our per-child spending for our programs is pretty comparable to other school districts around us?
As school districts, yes. It is, it's pretty comparable to school districts, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Schopf?
So, I think Mr. Moon just asked a question that's very similar to one that I generally ask most years, Ms. Burke, you know that. And I think you gentlemen, as a mother of boys, I expect my boys to be involved too. So, I'm training them up well, you know, make it a short flight path for them. But when I look at this, this spending, you know, this is a perennial problem that we face. It's like, okay, so we're spending, what, is it $24 million? Is that right? $25 million. So, $25 million for 1,745 kids. And I think, you know, the fact that several hundred are left on a waiting list, you know, if you could do it for 11, all of a sudden, you're doing it for everybody. And when we talk about the waiting list, I think I perennially ask, it's not so much just how many are on the waiting list, it's where. Because that facilities piece is so crucial. So, do we have an improved understanding now that facilities and my dear Mr. Sneed and Mr. Plattenberg are doing the student planning areas and geocoding? Are we carrying down that geocoding down to the little ones so that we understand really where the hotspots are?
Yes. So, we have done that in the past. We do know that the majority of the kids that often sit on the waitlist are in the Falls Church Anandale area, also out in Reston, Herndon area. We do geocode them. We actually do that in-house and we do work with facilities to have that done periodically throughout the year.
So, this is, you know, this is painful for me because we just passed a budget where we didn't raise class size. And that's also where our lowest class sizes are. And I think, you know, if you squeeze, you know, some of our facilities, understanding of what we're doing where and the fact that how much, I mean, you all have described so beautifully how much advantage you get. And not only advantage for your children, but advantage, you know, for the whole household. I mean, your child becomes like a wraparound service in themselves when they come home and they're like, you know, hands in lap. I love that. So, that pays forward, you know? It's not just the child receiving the benefit, it's the whole family. If there is a way for us to continually, as we look at the CIP that's coming up for next year, look where those spaces are. And if we're communicating well with the families, like you're describing, find the places for the four-year-olds. Because next year, we're going to have them, you know, the following year, we're going to have them. So, you have one shot at getting them in. And if there isn't a way for the community plus staff to communicate even in a more crystal clear manner, look, if you, the board prioritizes, you know, these things. I mean, it's one thing to say they got to have a waitlist, they don't have to have 200 and some on a waitlist. And are the 200 and some, are they all four-year-olds or is that a combination?
They're mostly four-year-olds, but there are some three-year-olds, I believe. Is that correct, Carrie? There's a few three-year-olds in that group. But the primary, because most of our spaces are funded for four-year-olds. So, that's really who ends up mostly on the waitlist.
Right. And I don't know if anybody, I've never taken a poll of anybody else on the board, but I believe I'm the only person on the board that's had a child in infant toddler and in pre-K, in special ed pre-K. So, you know, I've seen it, I've experienced it. You know, mine, you know, was moved unceremoniously, you know, to a very distant school, you know, where I was putting a four-year-old on a bus for 50 minutes one way, 50 minutes. You know, that's, that's a facilities problem. That's a prioritization problem. So, I understand it truly. So, I'll bring it up again in the CIP and ask us to look at, you know, where we prioritize money. But I'm just wondering if we, at some point, can talk about what's a compendium of services? What that compendium of services looks like? And whether or not we're able to, and this is also another perennial question, whether we've explored private, private facilities? So that, you know, if you get to a certain point and you said, you know, we stop enrolling at a certain point, well, so do they and all of the spots may not be gone. And if there isn't a way in, because those aren't necessarily going to be $13,790, they're going to be a lot less. If there isn't a delta between whatever, how much less they are and what's left over to close the gap and allow them access to some degree of services? Because to me, it's better that they have some services before they arrive because you only have the one year. So, have we explored that anymore?
So, our partners in the county, that is really their role. And they continue to expand their work with private providers. And we have done some- And we have done some work with our VPI Plus grant where we have two classrooms that sit in community programs. The, the county does a really wonderful job with working with those private providers and having them participate in professional learning and berating the funds with their CCAR money. So that's how they are successful. So they are also berating funds where they take their childcare funding, so families have to qualify for childcare, and then they use the VPI funds to supplement that. And children sit in classrooms with other children who may be paying full tuition or be on a sliding scale as well. And that model is working very well. The challenge is, is that participating in that asks the providers to fulfill certain requirements. And that's because that's part of the grant. So engaging private providers in having to, to up the quality in some instances or the expectations of their program is sometimes a challenge. But they've done a really nice job engaging quite a few private preschools across the county to do that.
I would just, I would just challenge that, that maybe part of the grant writing in some way is a, is a two-tier, you know, is a one-tier for who we can meet in our own facilities? And that there's a second tier, maybe a lesser amount per child that we can get if we can engage for the places where we don't have children and there's still children on the waiting list? If we can, you know, use some of those monies. The last comment I have is I don't love FCPS pre-K because I don't think it is what it says it. I mean, and the brand is, to me, that says we're providing pre-K and we aren't. And I wonder if that will create expectations in the community that there's access to pre-K and there really isn't. So I don't love that.
Okay, we appreciate your feedback.
Just from, from a marketing standpoint, I think it may potentially cause those problems.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll take a turn here. And I wanted to follow up on what Mrs. Schultz was just talking about with the, with the facilities issue. That was one thing I had wanted to ask is, to what extent is it facilities versus just not having enough preschool funds? I represent one of the areas with the highest waiting list, but at the same time, we've now, it used to be, I believe, a couple of years ago, we had 80 on the waiting list at Bailey's, for example. But we do have now, with Upper Bailey's, we do have space, you know, at both Bailey's Upper and Bailey's Primary. So if you can assess, to what extent are we, do we have an issue with not having space versus just simply not having funds? Or do you have that? I mean, if you, even if you have just a sense of-
I mean, we, I can go back and take a deeper dive into it, but I think the challenge is, is often where our needs are, is often where we have capacity issues. So Bailey's is unique in that it created some space by separating the schools. And we actually have five classrooms at Bailey's, which is wonderful.
You no longer have a waiting list at Bailey's?
We still have a waiting list at Bailey's. But in, and there may, there may be space. So then money becomes an issue at Bailey's, right? But other locations, it's both. There is no space and there are no funds. So I, we can do a more detailed look with facilities to see space, where there's space. And then there will always be a need for the money if there is space.
Okay. Well, I, yeah, I would, I would appreciate seeing that, particularly since so much of it is in my part of the world. Also on the, the waiting list, I see that, that you were able to put 130 children there because of mobility. So it's great that we're serving those 130. I have to wonder what happened to the 130? Does this suggest they moved out of county? Or does that suggest they moved into an area where they didn't have access to preschool or some combination of the two? The 130 who, who left?
Yeah, again, I'd have to take a look, but typically, if they moved and there was space in another location, we, we put them in another location.
You would serve them in the other location.
Yeah, we will conserve, serve them if they continue to live in Fairfax County. But if they move out of county, then-
So probably most of these actually moved out of county then? Okay, that's, that's what I was wondering. So it's good that we were able to, to put a few more, more students in there. And I thought we might want to, Madam Clerk, if you could put up number, page five for me. I just thought it would be good for us to see the recommendations that, that we have received tonight. And I had one quick question on the recommendations. Let's see, there we go, yeah. So going back to the playgrounds, I, it's something that, I'm glad you raised this with us because I'm, I'm not sure that I would have thought in terms of how, you know, our playgrounds are geared for, you know, five through 12-year-olds typically. Did anyone give you any kind of an estimate on what the cost would be to provide this for the, the playgrounds that don't have it? And I believe you said Glen Forest does have things that are, did you say that? So they, they do have age appropriate, which is good to hear. Okay, well, that, that gives me, that gives me a good sense. So for you, so 115 to 120, just to add, to add to what we have? To add age appropriate, interesting. Okay, well, those were my questions. And I believe, Mr. McElveen, did, oh, and Ms. Cora Sanders, did you have a follow-up?
I just wanted to, with all the discussion about facilities and waiting list, I know that there are multiple models on how we satisfy the pre-K demand. And in the Mount Vernon region, they're not necessarily in classrooms, but are in alternative settings. And we spend a lot of time working with private daycare providers to educate them. And so that's how they've addressed much of the waiting list. But that's a different experience than the experience that many of our kids have elsewhere in the county. So I'm wondering if the reason the demand is higher or the waiting list is longer in Falls Church, Annandale, Reston and Herndon is because of the more structured approach?
Again, I would have to go and look. I do know in the Bailey's community, there is less opportunity for, for in-home childcare. But I don't know about the other communities. We'd have to, we'd have to take a look at where childcare providers are in those communities. That, that's not an, an area that I often look at. I, I partner with my colleagues at Office for Children where that's their area of expertise that I'd have to take a look with them.
I think it would be interesting to look at how that heat map changes if you take it down to the level or disaggregate it into the different types of services being provided. And then I'm sure you know that we're going to be getting six new classrooms at the original Mount Vernon High School for pre-K.
I, I did hear that they're allocating space there, which is wonderful.
So to, to wrap up, I heard two next steps. And board members can tell me if they, if I missed any. One was Mr. Moon's request for a break, breakout of funding services, sources?
Want to know FCPS funding, right?
Just FCPS's portion.
Oh, just FCPS's portion, all right. And then number two was the question about the waitlist and to what extent the, the waitlist is there because of facilities issues versus-
The where the waitlist is, is-
The, while the where and, and the why, yeah, basically, the where and the why. Is that doable, Ms. Burke?
Well, definitely the where, the why, there's lots of variables as to why. But we will do our best to look at all those variables and include them.
Excellent. Thank you so much for joining us tonight and for the good conversation. I believe we need to take three minutes between, okay? So we'll take a very quick break.